Alright. Well, we are. It's time for the panel meeting number 159. It's August 12th, 2025. And today we are being joined by Alfred, Ashley, Colleen, David, S A Guillermo, Kevin, Leandro, Stephen, Sugar and Spice, Taffo, Funny and Vasu. Thanks all for being here, especially David. We'll get to that in a bit. As you can see on screen, relatively concise agenda for today. Um, starting off with a couple of mentions and then we do have a little bit of time saying hi and getting familiar with David. And if there's any time remaining after that, um, there's room for open topics. If you happen to have any open topics, please drop them in chat. We'll get to them. Alright, then a quick reminder on what the ambassador program even is and what we're doing. Basically, we're a group of like-minded people that are all quite in tune with the mission and vision of Singularity Net and its ecosystem. And we have a wide-ranging, um, selection of work groups that, um, if you're interested in helping out, we do have a work group that, um, fits your needs and interests. So please hop onto our Discord server. You'll find a how to join section there and that section will tell you how to join. Alright, with that out of the way, um, a couple of mentions. First of all, earlier today during, um, governance work group, we went over the results of the work group sentiment survey. Um, we had thirty-eight respondents, which translates to about sixty-five percent, which I believe is, uh, at least internally, it's a record for participation. So thanks all who contributed, um, shared their opinions there. Um, kind of thinking how to summarize this, um. Well, pretty much, there's a whole bunch of, um, angles of looking at it and then we're still in the process of trying to puzzle out how this will affect, um, upcoming quarterly budgets. And yeah, especially the combination of multiple questions, like if a work group shows up, um, being perceived as not really in tune with, um, what they set out to do and what they're actually doing, if they're, for example, perceived as being overpriced. Um, and if they're also, uh, seen as not really putting out high-quality content. Like that, that kind of combination could lead to, um, uh, reductions in budget. And there still has to be quite a lot of discussion on the topic. Um, it has been flagged that we shouldn't be fearing, um, at some point, stalling work groups or like, like pausing, uh, pausing them. Um, if the, um, circumstances, um, ask for it. And yeah, connected to that, there's all puzzle around, um, how we can, um, on an individual work group level, how we can better collect feedback, because the survey we did was, was relatively global, high level, uh, in a sense. And didn't really generate, um, yeah, concrete improvements or, or direct feedback onto work groups. So yeah, that, that puzzle will be, uh, continuing, uh, Thursday during the governance session. Uh, quick check on the room and my skipping anything important in that, uh, small summary there. Please feel free to speak up. Alright, I think that covers then for now. Um, I'll also share the RIT AI, um, meetings, uh, like the recording in the governance channel so you can simply re-watch. Um, ah, thanks Funny for, um, that link. Um, I, I did link it here. I did not put it in chat yet. You did. Thanks. Um, yeah, cool. I was gonna say, um, on that, uh, raw result spreadsheet, I did check it out. It's very raw, like, if, if somebody at some point is, is making graphs, uh, please make a copy of the document and, and if you wouldn't mind sharing, uh, the graphs, uh, which it puts out, um, that would be welcome. Because I'm not too well first in, uh, generating graphs on this raw data, um, myself. Alright, uh, then next mention, um, Colleen, if I may give you the floor. Please take it away.
Thanks Peter. Um, yeah, I just wanted to mention that this Monday, we're gonna have our third in this series of the AI ethics work group community discussion for the ambassador program. Um, and it will be the title, "Redefining Intelligence in the Era of AI", not that I'm the best host for this subject, but, uh, we're gonna really attempt to, uh, try to get some discussion going, uh, even a little bit of interactive things. I have a couple of special guests coming as well, so, um, please join us, fifteen hundred UTC, and, um, we should be having this link, the Zoom link soon. But so to see you all there, would love to see everybody participate. I'd like to be able on this one to, um, actually grab data out of it afterward in some form or another, to be able, uh, to use in the future. So yeah, please, uh, please join us. Everyone is welcome. You don't have to be in the ambassador program. Just please join us. We'll see you then.
Nice. Thanks, Colleen. Um, cool. Yeah, and then, uh, I did want to throw out an additional reminder on the AGI twenty-five conference. I did see some of you in chat, um, uh, yeah, joining in on the streams. Uh, there's one more day, um, coming tomorrow and I do believe I'll, I'll get the schedule link in chat, uh, in a bit. Alright, and with that out of the way, that does bring us to, uh, this nice special slide. I'll stop sharing because this slide isn't, uh, providing that much, um, information. Um, yeah, I'd like to welcome David Taylor. Um, I think, well, maybe, could you introduce yourself?
Yeah, happy to. So, um, thanks a lot first and foremost for having me along. Um, my name's David Taylor. A few weeks ago, I had, um, the privilege of being appointed as the chief marketing officer of ASI and, uh, Singularity Net. So over the last few weeks, I've had my ears wide open, my eyes wide open, um, sort of seeing what the current state of the nation is with regards to everything at Singularity Net, everything at ASI, um, and then starting to get into the, uh, more than service level, um, of the ecosystem as well, because uh, there's a lot of history there, there's a lot of, um, development there. Um, and my background, I've worked in big technology, small technology, regulated environments, unregulated environments. Um, I ran my own business for a while and sold the IP rights to, uh, the mayor of London. And if anybody knows anything about working with governments, they know it's very difficult to get any sort of finances out of them. Um, but here we are. That was the exit plan. So, um, shortly after that, um, Janet gave me a call and said, hey, um, we're looking for somebody to head up the marketing at Singularity Net. Um, my background in Cardano, um, obviously I was the chief marketing officer there and I served, I think it was three years, uh, in total, um, working across community, product, ecosystem. Um, and during the day, I was speaking to governments and politicians, uh, global CEOs, and then in the evening, I was arguing with D gens, uh, on Reddit, uh, Discord and Twitter. So, um, very much used to work in super complex environments, um, where developing technology is being deployed. Um, the biggest learning for me probably that, at that time, was how to work with the community, how to work with ambassadors like yourselves, um, and how to sort of pull communities of communities together. So, um, Ben O'Handlon and I, if anybody knows the, uh, Cardano ecosystem, I used to work quite closely with him, uh, specifically bridging across from IOHK to the Cardano Foundation and Emergo, because we had the three legs of the stool. Um, much in similar fashions to how we have, um, within the ASI Alliance and various different organizations, um, various different spinoffs as well. So I'm very well used to, um, sort of getting my hands dirty and rolling my sleeves up, because, um, I am a firm believer that if you're not there and doing the work, then you can't see it, you can't feel it, you can't hear it. Um, and quite often, people may shield information from you for one reason or another. Um, whereas if you're there live in living color, um, then you get to see it, you get to feel it, you get to hear it. So, um, I think just sort of to start with, I have, um, produced what I call the diary of a madman. Um, and that's mainly because it was all of my thinking from all the different conversations, um, that I was having with all the different people within all the different entities and organizations at different levels. And what I've done is I've built effectively eleven pillars with two-hundred-and-sixty-something outcomes. Um, that goes up and that goes down every, every couple of days, um, depending on which way the wind's blowing, uh, as you can imagine. Um, and what I'm doing is starting to line up resources to be able to say, okay, how do we tackle this? Um, because as they say, um, the best way to eat an elephant is one bite at a time. And there's certainly a lot of catching up to do. Um, and there's a lot of sort of leapfrogging that we can do as well. Um, but I joined because I'm excited by the opportunity that lays ahead of us. Um, I am excited by the smart people that are in the ecosystem, um, and doing all the work that they're doing. I'm excited by the respective leaders, um, with their respective differences and their different backgrounds within the different organizations. And I've got to say, the first few weeks have been great. Um, so I decided it was time and thank you to Peter for inviting me along to this session, uh, to meet you guys and get a little bit of an understanding about who you are, what you're doing, um, what's working well, and just sort of creating that initial point of contact, because um, there are potentially some ways that I can help, um, some learnings that I can bring forward from, um, certainly working with the community team at the Cardano Foundation specifically, um, and the ambassador program and what we built out there. Um, but yeah, looking to, looking to roll on to success. We're starting to see some early wins, uh, gain some early traction. Um, so that's, that's about it.
Perfect. Thanks a lot for that.
Thank you very much.
Um, yeah, so I, I didn't really like, um, like you said, an initial, initial getting to know each other kind of setup, uh, led me to not make any plans on, on how this would unfold. Um, I do think it could be nice to, just for a bit of background, um, um, basically like about a year ago-ish, um, with your predecessor, um, Loic, we also had a little bit of interaction, trying to get a little bit closer, uh, to Singularity Net Foundation. Uh, that didn't quite materialize, um. So yeah, in, in that sense, uh, quite happy to, um, well, take a fresh start there. And yeah, so, so to, to me, it would be interesting to, to puzzle out and, and maybe that's not for today exactly, uh, but, but, um, yeah, how we, how we can get closer, um, to the foundation. Um, you know, there's, there's some practical things, um, like I felt in the past, um, basically on, on most of the content we're, um, putting out there. Um, it's always in a reactive mode, like we see what gets published publicly, um, and then the work starts. The, yeah, to me personally, it would be, um, one of the goals at least, um, eventually, like not today, but at some point.
Actually, we're probably, we're probably a little bit closer than you would imagine. Um, so in that list of eleven pillars, um, a big part of that is talking about governance. Uh, another part of that is community and audience growth, right? So if you, um, bolt those things, two things together, um, because again, within the organizations, again, just to be open, um, we have some challenges with governance as well. So, um, you know, so many different projects being worked on, um, so many different communication streams, so many different formats. Um, so one of the first things that I'm looking to address is that workflow. Um, and how we can start to improve that, because we, we need to move from this, um, collective sort of position where we are reacting to a lot of things. Um, and quite often, um, it's a mindset change, uh, that's required. So I've started building out various different frameworks, various different initiatives. And going back to even the most academic, basic approach. Um, and Peter, have I showed you the Maslow's hierarchy graph? Or pyramid? Yeah. So effectively, it's talking about where do we start? Where do we start at the foundation? And that's infrastructure, um, and credibility. And often that comes from, uh, knowing that the tech is solid, knowing that the communication channels are strong. Um, being able to communicate in the first place is a big barrier in some instances. Um, so again, you know, from that side, happy to work on that with you guys to figure out how we can open that communication flow, if it's me joining these calls on a regular basis, if it's some other format, I'm open to suggestions. It's more what works for you. Um, because again, um, you, you have your, I'm, I'm sure you have your preferred methods of working, um, that I'm not familiar with at this point. So, yeah, open to you.
Yeah, fair. And, and great to hear. Um, I did make some, uh, checks on, on how we are on the NDA side of things, which, um, I'm getting told should be relatively super easy. Um, so that was quite good to hear. Uh, Taffo, your hand up. And, and please, um, let's, let's make this a, a group conversation. So please just raise your hand and jam in.
And you mentioned governance, like, yeah, one communication is one side and another thing, like, when I really had this like, uh, check-in, prepare the, uh, recording, uh, when we discussed like, or like ID eight, how can we connect Cardano and Singularity Net a bit closer? And there, like, I, I would see very hardly, like, there isn't really way to just kind of use the same structures, because the way we created here was like more bottom-up approach. But because of the experience, like, uh, from my perspective, when, uh, the beginning from like four years ago now, or so, uh, regarding with the catalyst, project catalyst start also, there is a common theme of each of these decentralized organizations always struggling with knowledge management and like data management and, and funding. And funding, in a sense that, yes, they oftentimes get funding, but it's never sustainable. And even in the ambassador program, the price went up and then we were able to escape, but then the price goes down and then we just is, it causes this kind of argument, okay, which is more higher priority. But on the other side, I feel like I can leverage always another ecosystem funding us, or could we ask the foundation to help us scale? Because like these things we are building as MVPs, because this is our capacity right now with the current funding. But leveling up, like in a sense that, hey, we could provide these tools we're providing to other organizations. Because if I know how much you looked into ambassador program, there are like two paradigms happening here. One is that we are driving this, um, mission of Singularity Net, but on the other side, we're also working how we make this decentralized collaboration in a way, and efficient, and what kind of tools we need in order to capture our intent. For example, we have this, say, a high-value work group and which is like collecting meeting summaries and, and in a standardized way, so that it's like transparent and accessible across the time. And we can look two years past, like what, when, when we made this decision or how can we kind of adopt to this? Or when new members are coming in, we, what we want, we would like to, like talk with these, uh, ACI agents that are now coming up, but we still haven't made this integration, because there is this gap between the knowledge and even if we have a capacity to connect with some skills into the network, the, it, the cost is there. It is like, somebody has to take the, like, personal, like downside, okay, I'm just gonna quit everything else and like pay myself to kind of do this connection. And that's also not sustainable, because it's just not. And so I was just wondering if there is a chance for either the foundation or, or like networks to promote like these individual proposals that are done, uh, not just in Singularity Net, but aside from the larger network of blockchain, or just from foundation itself, a bit more, put more thought into it, what kind we scale up in terms of tools or work groups that are already established in here?
Yeah, absolutely. And it's, it's a very valid point and it's a consistent point. Um, again, you know, my, I, I can remember it was my first week at the foundation, as in the Cardano Foundation. Uh, and they said, oh, there's this, uh, project catalyst thing, um, can you, can you join it on Sunday? So I, yeah, I've joined it, thought it would be a casual conversation. Um, and all of a sudden, there was somebody from the foundation, um, you know, all, all the pitchforks came out and it was quite an entertaining, uh, sort of two hours for me. Um, but what I, what I have learned specifically from that is, you know, there are ways to create those bridges. Um, sometimes we just need to know what the requirements are. Um, because again, some of those, um, sort of, um, things that you were talking about earlier, I know in this particular instance, some of the individuals, um, used to work with them personally. So, you know, we have, we have a, a relative network that we could potentially leverage. Um, it's just being clear with what the, um, what the objectives are, what the requirements are, um, and sort of getting it to that stage where you know, we can, we can prove that we've made an investment of time, effort, whatever that, whatever that quantifier is. Um, and then being able to ask to get to that, to the next stage. Um, because then again, you've shown that willing and shown that effort and shown that, um, sort of social proof, if you will, um, to then take it a bit further. So hap- yeah, happy to explore, I think is probably what I'm trying to say.
Yes, please. Stephen.
Yeah, thanks Peter. Hi David. I, I think I remember you from Cardano and I remember the state the ambassador's program was in in Cardano about three years ago or so. There was, there was a kind of sense then, I remember that kind of, when you came to catalyst, there's a kind of, it was a very kind of, let's put it politely, dynamic time, you know, and, um, yeah, no, and the Cardano, there was a, that was from them. And that was an interesting example, maybe in good, on a bigger scale in comparison to Snet, because that, I have to say, I think that's that distance, that was from them, where it was partly due maybe to ambassadors being treated as at a distance. That seemed to be reduced over, quite substantially over the, the few years. And I think that happened by, um, having, you know, community stakeholders or key voices being brought on board, um, by the Cardano Foundation. I can't think of their names, but I go, some names come to mind, particularly you're active on, say, social media and so on. And, um, they've done a wonderful job of, um, you know, actually getting their hands dirty in the weeds, you know, so basically just it's, you know, it takes time to build up that, that trust and that relation. So really welcome any, uh, particularly, you know, again, it's about commitment and seriousness and capability to a certain extent. But selecting, uh, community leaders or community, uh, people from the community to, um, engage much more closely and in, with the aim of actually, you know, being almost, you know, part of Cardano. Oh, of, of not Cardano, sorry, but fraud and slip, a part of the, a foundation.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You know, and I, I hear loud and clear and you're right. And you know, some of that, some of that wasn't easy, right? Um, it was really difficult conversations as to how, how to resource it. Again, exactly as TiVo said, um, how, how do we do that? Um, in a, in a way that um, sort of is as flexible as it needs to be for, for anybody that's giving up their spare time. Um, because again, everybody's got their, their day jobs, their personal lives, everything else. Um, and that can change over the course of a six-month project or whatever. So, um, it's about being able to sort of have that reserve bench as well, if you will, um, of people that can sort of be around to support if, if bodies get a little bit thin on the ground. And again, I'm sort of alluding to a couple of specific examples that I was involved with. Um, that you sort of had that, that, um, substitutes bench, if you will, um, of people that could support or bridge, bridge a bit of time where somebody else wasn't able to be as active or whatever. Um, and being realistic with it as well, because, um, all best intents and purposes, again, you don't know what would happen next week. So, um, it's quite often important to be, um, to be sensible about that. And if this, then that type, um, scenario, as you would do in any other logistical work stream, um, sort of an, an understanding of, okay, well, if that's changed, how do we, how do we, how do we pivot? Um, and again, I don't know about some of the specific initiatives that we're working on or that we're looking to work on. Um, but again, open to that conversation.
Right, thanks David. Um, Kevin, please, if there's a couple of second silence and you have your hand up, uh, no need for me to give you.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I'm just getting off the, the bus. Uh, everyone just left the conference and AGI and, uh, I, uh, just getting myself settled here. But, uh, yeah, no, it's, it's really incredible to see you coming into the ambassador program. I, I do think it's an important piece. And like I said at the beginning, I, you know, it's the reason I even started my company. Um, one thing I, you know, I, I would love to see like, uh, it, obviously you coming back into the rooms on a regular basis would be incredible and it really gives a deep connection to not only Singularity Net, but the ASI Alliance as a whole, which I think is gonna be really important for the, the things to come. Um, sorry about that. Um, the, the other thing is, um, and I really want to stress that, I know Peter, like we had talked about it when, uh, we, uh, we first started working on the, or when I first started working on the ambassador program, but get, getting the ambassadors to events, I think is so incredibly important. If there's some way to support that, um, just being able to put FaceTime in with people, it, it, it brings things to an entirely different level. Um, you know, it's great to collaborate in a decentralized way, but being able to have FaceTime with different people in the ecosystem, um, kind of inspires you to do more and you can collaborate to do more. And I think just the nature of a decentralized ecosystem, collaborations and partnerships and sort of forging and creating pathways to allow each individual to collectively be best at what they're best at and, and raise up the whole ecosystem as a whole. Um, building something together i- is the name of the game. And I think some of that has to be done in person and, um, also probably telling, um, the, the stories of the, uh, some of the ambassadors and what's going on and helping, maybe, maybe, uh, you know, as the chief marketing officer, you can offer some tips for the video work group and the writers and, uh, the marketing group to, to sort of improve and create a more efficient workflow to get the right content out there, because um, in my humble opinion, I think, you know, from a community like this, it's going to be one person telling another person and using socials and, and the, the technologies at our fingertips to discuss how ASI, how Singularity Net is, you know, in real time, in the real world, able to improve lives and, and make things better. So.
I, I mean, agree, agree with absolutely everything you said, right? Um, I had, for the first time in a long time, I had massive FOMO, uh, because I wasn't actually at, uh, Rare Evo. Um, but obviously a lot of my old friends were. Um, so it was, it was good to see that camaraderie and that sort of relationship continuing that often started in a group like this or, um, something similar. So, um, it's been fantastic to sort of see that, uh, see that build and that grow. And again, a lot of that connection and trust and everything that comes with it often only comes from being in person. So, um, I actually I don't know if I should say it was a mistake, but I put my neck in a noose a little bit where, um, I mentioned to, um, Charles and Fred that we should have community-led events, because it was COVID times, um, people often couldn't travel out of their own town or across state lines or anything like that. Um, so in that first year of the summit, we had twenty-something community-led events all around the world. And often they were led by ambassadors, um, you know, um, no particular events experience. Um, so we had to sort of run a bunch of workshops on, you know, this is what you need to be aware of when looking at a contract with a venue, if you need to get a contract with a venue. Um, you know, do we have somebody in-house that could do a sort of a legal support review that, you know, you're not leaving your ex, yourself exposed, for example, if, um, for whatever reason, only two people turned up and you were then left with a, a bill to pay of whatever that would be. Um, and sort of, again, exactly then, as you were saying, um, helping people understand, not necessarily the vision and the mission, that's all relatively well-known and a lot of you guys have been around. Um, for long enough to teach me a lot about that, uh, specifically with regards to Singularity Net and the ecosystem. Um, but being able to, and what Peter was alluding to there with the, um, the concept of the, um, what do you call it? The non-disclosure agreement, the NDA, um, is in a situation where I would love to be able to say, hey, you know, here's the information that we're releasing this week. Um, you've got content writers, you've got various different people with various different skills. Um, you've then got a heads up, um, and you know, I can share the, the key messages that we're looking to get across, um, and the audiences. Um, and I think probably most important is being able to associate with those respective audiences, because a prime example is we had, um, the main social media channel for ASI and that was it. Um, but what we've done is we've broken it out to, um, specifically investors, meaning institutional, um, for obvious, um, uh, compliance reasons, where we're not in any meaningful way pitching to retail investors. Um, academics, so they could be analysts or researchers, I should say, which might be academics, um, and looking to understand the novel developments that we're releasing. Um, or they may be an analyst within a financial firm. So, you know, doing assessments for ETFs, um, and that kind of thing. Um, we need to be speaking in their language and the obvious one is builders, uh, technical and non-technical. Um, because again, exactly as you said earlier, Kevin, um, one of the biggest things is we need to not Eli five it, but we need to help them understand, um, what these developments mean for them as business leaders. Can it help them be quicker, faster, do things cheaper, do things more efficiently? All of those things, because if I just produce a bunch of content about Metacycle, for example, somebody who is a founder of an organization that would benefit from the network effect of that wouldn't necessarily know how to utilize it or what it means or, you know, is it even relevant for them? Or do they need to kick it to their CTO or somebody else within the organization to have a look at it? So yeah, I guess what I'm trying to say there is, in real life for sure, is important. It's just then the, the how, the where, the what and everything else. The vision, as in the visibility of what's coming up, what's coming down the line is super important for you guys as well. And then it's how do we iterate and improve? Because again, you know, over a period of time, we'll get to know each other, get to know the ways of working with the different work streams and be able to sort of say, okay, here's where we hit the post this time, how can we improve it? Or, you know, do we need a different approach or something like that? So yeah, from that side, super important. And again, a lot of that comes from communication.
Nice, great to hear. Guillermo, good for you to turn. Feel free to speak.
Hey, David. Great to have you here. This is, I believe, is a real milestone for, for, for all of us, for the program probably, as we look forward. And also pretty cool to have you talk about communication, because communication fails. There are ninety-nine percent of investment is going, is going to the drain. So probably not, not everyone realizes how important communication is. Thought to start it, but by the way, Guillermo from Argentina, Córdoba, representing SNET Latam community. And yeah, it's definitely the challenge for all technology to drive adoption, but for that definitely training and education, work that you have been using and in your, in your media. And definitely is what have been helping us in the regional expansion of, of the program, you know, here in the, with the, with the ambassadors and also trying to help deep funding and and today focus on driving adoption into the ASI stack. Okay, so we have been, yeah, so I have backgrounds in a lot of the stuff, but also I'm a builder, so I understand the importance of teaching and and sharing the knowledge. But most important to just give the one, two-step, you know, that opens the door for people to engage and adopt this technology. So definitely we have been working on, focusing on, not regionally also, but within the program to these basic fundamentals, what are workshops, education and most important governance, because it really is the fundamentals of this program. And also through the R and D, we have been building a pretty nice tool. It's already deployed in beta and we're about to test it. So probably it's a, it's a good thing because we have been planning on integrating the ASI stack and also the agents into it. So just to be short, great timing.
Good. I'm glad. And I'm, I'm really glad to hear that you're, you're building and you're using what's available now. And I'm, I'm sure you're already future planning as to some of these things that are coming down the line. Just to sort of take half a step back to talk about the education piece. I was part of, or led the team internally that started the alpha and the beta of the Cardano Academy. It got to a stage where it grew so many legs that we had to appoint a whole team to look after it and to grow it and into what it is now. And obviously I can't talk about specific plans that I have here. But I, you can kind of add two and two together here, that we, we were responsible for doing that. And ASI Academy sounds, sounds like a good thing to me. There are also other ways to do it in a shorter timeframe, right? Because that takes a lot of people, a lot of time, those sorts of things. So is it that we partner up with Binance Academy, just to pick one at random? Other, other exchanges are available, obviously, to do my British BBC thing. And just understanding how we can get the education collateral, if you will, whether that's an online course, whether that's written content, whether that's, you know, a podcast series, whatever format it takes, and it could be all of those things. To be able to speak to those respective audiences, again, in the same way that we're kind of showing with those social channels. So today we announced about the next element of the ASI chain information. If you haven't seen that yet, please do go, go check it out. And over the next day or so, we'll release sub articles that talk about what that means for builders, what that means for the researchers and what means for the institutional investors as well. So, you know, being, being consistent in that is probably the biggest key. And the discipline that it takes to do that is probably underestimated. But, you know, we're looking to drive that consistency. We're looking to drive those regular messages and be able to share what those are. Because if you guys don't know, then if you're around the dinner table and talking to friends and family, you can't, you can't explain it to them either. So, yeah.
Yeah, for us to follow on that, and I'm going to phrase Vanny's, that she has to raise her hand. Through consent process and governance, Vanny nailed it, is like, let's embed education in the process. Sometimes you have different channels, you know, those are strategic communication strategies. So and we have been following in, in Spanish for the Latam region, we have been following the spotlight, agent spotlight, and we're doing our own in Spanish, even though we're pushing all the, because we, you know, we need to train in regards of NCPs, there's a lot of stuff that not developer user of our stack can really get on from different tricks and tips about how to integrate the agent. And Leon is here from, and he's helping us with that. They have been very, very useful. And I think that's also a small door to get at least our main objective, drain adoption regional. But also in terms of globally strategy, yeah, definitely it's the gamification of education is a really cool, it's a really cool thing. And when you get it into a tool, you know, you get it into a class or into a process of a mechanism of this technology, it works really well. So the results in terms of numbers, they show that is kind of a good way to go.
Yeah.
Sorry, Vanny.
Entirely agree. And I would love to, well, I'm already starting to talk about the gamification of things. But I need to get the basics right first, right? I've been here a few weeks, still figuring out which way is up and which way the emergency exits are. And I work from home. So, you know, at that stage, I've got some of those other, some of those other elements ahead of me as respective challenges, as anybody starting a new job has. But looking forward to exploring those things for sure. Thank you.
Yeah, hi, David. It's really nice to meet you. I'm Vanny. I'm working mainly on governance, AI ethics and archiving mainly, but my question or point is nothing really to do with any of those. First of all, I was super, super chuffed to hear you say builders, tech and non-tech. This is so nice to hear because people are building all sorts of things and sometimes the emphasis is on the technical builders. But if they don't kind of collude with the other people who are building community and building ethical approaches, they're not going to get it right. And like Guillermo was saying, it's all about building our ethics into everything we do, whether it's tooling or whether it's marketing. But I was just thinking, I mean, thanks so much for being here and meeting us where we are. Because that for me is an absolute cornerstone of community engagement and co-production is coming to us. And I was just wondering if you're doing the same with the other communities of ASI, like FET and Ocean, meeting them where they are and what are you finding? Because we sometimes find we'd like to make more connections with them. We've done a bit. We maybe haven't done as much as we would have liked to, and it'd be nice to build those connections.
Yeah, I, look, again, let's, let's start at the top. And again, it's, it's more thank you to Peter for inviting me because again, it's, what I wanted to do was come and meet you as early as humanly possible without embarrassing myself from that side. Because again, you know, if you've been at an organization for a couple of weeks, sometimes you don't know which way is up, which is fine. But again, it's getting to know you guys and getting to understand sort of what stage we're at. You know, and what, what we can do to sort of bridge some of those historical shortcomings or, you know, do we scratch some of those bits and start again somewhere, somehow, whatever? But to your point about sort of builders, technical and non-technical, you're absolutely right. So I quite often have an idea and I have to go to a technical friend of mine and quite literally say, can, can we, is this humanly possible with technology? And, you know, they may or may not know the answer. And again, I'll keep asking around until somebody says, no, but you can try this. So, you know, there are, there are lots of people out there like that, that if we were able to sort of serve that information more upfront, then, and again, in a, in a way that they understand without it being patronizing. You know, you can do this with this technology. Great, easy. Then they just need to be able to find it. With regards to the other sort of members of the ASI communities, not yet, is the honest answer. But again, only a certain amount of hours in a day. And again, Peter was the first to say, hey, are you willing and or able to come along? And of course willingly accepted that. So I am, I am an individual who sees marketing as more than the coloring in department, mainly because I'm colorblind and I'm, I've got shaky hands. So I'm terrible at both of those things. But ultimately what that means is I need to deploy other skills of mine, right? Whether that's building bridges, whether that's driving commercial value, whether that's translating product. The first time I met Charles Hoskinson, he sat down, looked me square in the eye and said, how do you feel being responsible for marketing my life's work? Big question. So from that side, you know, you, you are an ecosystem and a community of communities. And it's about being able to understand them. And this is the first step in that. So I will be looking to go and meet those other respective ambassadors and seeing how we can work together potentially. And there's probably more to come on it in the future, but I sent Peter a link of another sort of crypto blockchain ecosystem entity that is, is looking, it, it looks like and feels like it's a big community type ambassador type program. And I'm very keen to get under the skin of what that is because it would be, if it is what I think it is, it will be very interesting to see sort of how that rolls out as a, as a case study. So, yeah, it will be about meeting those, those groups hopefully over the next couple of weeks and then starting to understand again, more about this program, more about their programs. And the, the natural collaboration opportunities, because again, if it's forced, it won't work. You have to have willing parties at the table at all times.
I may have a bit loaded question. Right now on top of head, I don't even know how to ask it. But it's related to like the way you see governance in general. For example, in Cardano, we had this SIP sixty ninety-four process and Cardano Foundation was really like always like there to technically look at it and see if it's feasible and also helped the people to kind of collaborate each other to refine it. Also now with the recent fund, they enter Project Catalyst quite heavily and that caused also like backlash in there. But somehow it also gave like Cardinal a lot of new ideas and attention that yes, we need to change the structures. And now because of that, Project Catalyst was changed where community already beginning said, we need quite dramatic funding because then foundations can't do that. But you kind of showed that like this element will have an effect. And because of that, I feel like governance changed. And now there is, yeah, and now coming to SingularityNet and I feel like this cross-chain jumping back and forth. Because my first like understanding that, hey, we're in the big blockchain network is when Michaela Ulero came from IOG to SingularityNet and now I see you coming from Foundation to SingularityNet. I'm wondering, is everything coming to SingularityNet? Is that like the female?
No, and for the record, I'm much more agnostic than that. So I hear you and I see that. And again, there are some sort of familiar faces that have popped up on meetings and I've been like, oh, hey, how are you doing? But it, it's not like we've collectively got together and said, oh, shall we all go and work at SingularityNet? So I, I see and hear and feel the pain of what happened through that process because, you know, I, I had colleagues who were working very closely and working hard on it. And again, governance is a process and at times it's difficult. There's nothing more complicated than trying to decentralize control and sort of give that to an ecosystem or a community. So of course there will be, there will be challenges in that process. But again, open communication is the biggest part. And then practical reality is the other side. And hopefully it's meeting in the middle somewhere more often than not, because again, sometimes some decisions happen in whichever way. And people rightly feel strongly about it because they've got a view on how it could, would, should be. But I guess it's knowing that as many people in the, in the process are working with best intentions is a big thing.
Do you bring any of your own patterns to how governance should work or right now you're more feel like as a sponge and see what's happening here and before?
It's very, it's very much that. Because again, if I was to come in with sort of a preconception and say, okay, this is how we're doing it now, things would fall apart quite quickly. My job would be very difficult from, from day one. So it's more a case of understanding it and knowing what we learned along the way. Because again, you know, I've got the battle scars to prove some of these, some of these tough processes that we went through. But it's how you learn and how you adapt and sort of how you, yeah, remain cognizant that again, despite whatever differences, the, the best of intentions is ninety-eight percent of the time there. You know, it's very rarely that you would have somebody in a process as galling as that in particular was, that they would be there with a malicious intent. So again, it's trying to figure that out and trying to figure out the, the best way to do it for whatever those overall objectives are. So yeah, I can't, I can't really say much more than that at this point. Because I wouldn't, I wouldn't know what I was sort of pushing, pushing into. But yeah, hopefully that helps.
I was just gonna add that, yeah, decentralization obviously is super complex. And I agree with you that knowing what we've learned along the way is the main thing rather than what we came out with. I mean, we've mentioned governance, you've mentioned governance. And I just thought it was worth pointing out that as an ambassador program, I think we center governance more than your average ambassador program. A lot of them are purely about content creation and big numbers of people. Whereas I think we've tried to build a community and we've tried to think about how we govern ourselves and how we decentralize. And it just gives us a slightly different take and a different feel, I think. I just wondered to drag up another little thing from the distant past, well, distant in blockchain terms, anyway. Have you managed, yeah, it's last week, yeah. I wondered if you'd come across the Supervisory Council's decentralization blueprint from about a year, year and a half ago.
I have not. Is this something that Esther would have worked on?
Yeah.
Yeah. So I have spoken to her about it in passing, as in, I know it exists, but that's as far as we've got. So everything in the last sort of couple of weeks have been leading to AGI, as in the conference. Well, you know, bigger, bigger, bigger vision and all that. And then it's going to be on to BGI. So we didn't manage to connect today, but I'd be interested to know, yeah, your, your view.
I mean, I think it's just, it's an interesting document. I see it as kind of historical now, but it's just interesting to have a look at and think about some of the processes that we, you know, we had quite a lot of engagement in the Ambassador Program around it. And it just says a little bit about who we were when we think about decentralization and governance. So just use. So just useful background really, I guess.
Super. Thank you. I'll ask her, or I mean, if you, if you can send me a copy, great. Always happy to sort of dig into that stuff, because again, you know, I don't in any way meaning, meaningfully have an answer for everything by any stretch of the imagination. But again, it's how can I connect those people that do have the expertise? So I'd be interested to know, will you be coming along to BGI?
In person or?
Or virtually, yeah.
Virtually possibly, yes.
Good, excellent. Well, registration is open.
Yeah.
And everybody's welcome. So yeah, I mean, there's, there's going to be a lot of really interesting, our super, Peter's already sent that through, so thank you. Yeah, a lot of open and interesting discussions to take place there. We're already getting some really interesting topics and interesting speakers on board. So looking forward to sharing a little bit more about that in the coming weeks.
Yeah, we.
What do you think's your must watch for tomorrow? What's your top tip for, for the conference tomorrow?
Oh, to be fair, I've only just finished today. I'm gonna have to have a look, I'll drop you a note.
Cheers.
Yeah.
I'm gonna go for Joshua Bach there myself.
That's fair. How about you guys? Any more for that? No. But I did have, I'll just find the message now actually, because one of the team who is there, because we're, we're doing a lot of interviewing and we've had to buy more and more hard drives. Because again, everybody that is there is on top of their game from an academic and research and development and deployment perspective. And Ibi pinged me earlier to say, just finished interviewing, yeah, Joshua Bach, and she got goosebumps in the conversation. So I'm looking forward to seeing those interviews and they'll be shared in the coming weeks. If I can sort of share any of that stuff upfront, I will do. Just so you guys know what's coming or some of the, some of the bullet points. If not, then I'm afraid you get to see it with a great unwashed like me. But yeah, see what we can get out of it.
I guess it's regarding the time capacity, because like you said, we're ever just there. And I think the governance workshops and the live streaming was great stuff. And also, like if you know the people, you can connect with them and you can also, that extends your kind of material to digest. So yeah, not able to took multiple conferences in the same week, I would say.
Yeah, I know that pain and I opted to stay at home in favour of going to BGI in October.
Stephen, go for it. And also noting the time, so let's not drag on for ages.
Okay, yes, just for a quick, I'm just picking up on what you were saying about academia, David. And I just recall that, I mean, may already exist, so, but the IOHK website had a very good academic paper section, which I think still exists. And I just wonder if there's something similar in SNET now, I'm not, maybe there is. But it's about the context, the way the IHOK website was able to present that and also market it actually as a kind of how academically, let's say, not, I don't want to say advanced, but how academically aware Cardano was. So I think there's a similar, that's a quick win maybe there for SNET.
Entirely agree. And it was a conversation that took place last Tuesday or Wednesday, I'm losing track of the days. I joined the, one of the first leadership calls since I've been there, or been here, sorry. And one of the, one of those governance things that I was mentioning is the workflow from research and development and the academic side. Because again, if you look at our collective brains within the organisation, within the partner entities, you know, we, these individuals are being spited in research, left, right and centre. They're producing their own white papers and research papers. And the, the agreement that we've come to is when anything novel, I'm also gonna have to obviously go work backwards as well with what's already been delivered. But anything that's novel and new, as in is actually an advancement of technology, of the field of research, we'll be made aware of so that we can include it in a hub on the website. Because, you know, these are individuals who are quite literally building the future of intelligence. Why wouldn't we, in the same way we would champion you guys in the community and the ambassador programme, champion the work that they're doing and the research that they're doing? Because otherwise that's only acknowledged in a very small circle, whereas I think, yeah, more, more people need to know.
Yeah, absolutely. Another thing that played out in Cardano was you had academic research, so that was touted and then maybe tweeted about and then launched. And then you had a kind of secondary industry of people explaining that. And that gives people opportunities, you know, for exposition. So for, for, you know, the educational aspect of that, the didactic aspect of that, which is what creates a community in a sense, and also what creates a, an intelligent and compelling compute community.
Entirely. And again, there are other people that had a slightly different view. That was, oh, you know, you did that research five years ago and it hasn't been deployed. Okay, well, you know, other research came out and other methodologies and other technology was built and deployed. So we decided to take that, which again is perfectly valid and is perfectly human and is perfectly normal. But yeah, there's certainly a job there and that's one, that's part of one of the two hundred and sixty outputs is to build that connection between the research, development and deployment of technology. So, and again, Tim, Tim was a master of sort of hosting some of those conversations and teasing some of that information out of people on Cardano three sixty specifically. So again, yeah, there's a, there's a, there's a space here.
Yep, great. All right, yeah, looking at the clock, it's five past now. Let's have a quick check if there's any questions, also from your side perhaps, David, feel free to of course.
Yeah, I, I mean, from my side, again, it's just a thank you for having me. Looking forward to getting to know you all a little bit better about the programme, about where it's at and where, where you guys want to take it. What part I can sort of play in helping that happen in any meaningful way. Sort of keep me, keep me informed and keep me abreast. Because again, I'm happy to come and join these conversations just as, as a participant as and when I can. I've got a four-year-old and I can hear him running around outside and I know he should be in bed. So I'm gonna have to go and deal with that in a minute. But again, real life, real people, real jobs, all of those sorts of things. So looking forward to working with you all.
Yeah, great.
Thank you for coming, David. Thank you so much.
We don't have two hundred and sixty internal items, but at the same time with twenty-one workgroups, might be close actually.
There you go. You can have some of mine if you want.
All right, yeah, thanks again for joining in and also goes to the rest of the group. Thanks for spending your time here and to be continued.
Thank you, Peter.
Cheers.
Cheers, everyone. Bye bye.
As you have Peter, see you guys.